We will call the meeting of the Board of Education to order. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Holly Jarvis.
Here.
Carrie Germaine.
Present.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Here.
Kim Winter.
Here.
Autumn Henry.
Here.
Chuck Melkey.
Here.
Andrea Fick.
Here.
All right. Everyone is accounted for. Welcome, everybody. Would you please join us for the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And as a follow-up to our last board meeting, I did hear from the parent of the young man who led us last time, and she's willing to lend us her children, if we'd like, to do the pledge on a regular basis. And something I'd like to talk amongst ourselves at some point, if we'd like to have a student come from a school, one or two students, students or groups of students to help us. Because speaking for myself, I know I love having the students here, and I think everyone agrees. When we do have kids here, it's kind of gratifying. So, anyway, I did let the mom know that we would talk about it, and we were grateful for their attendance and their assistance. All right. Now, moving on, we do have an opportunity for public comment for agenda-specific items. If anyone would like to address the board, please step forward to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments for three minutes or less. And I don't see anybody running forward. So we do have another opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next, we have consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Andrea. Support.
Support.
Holly. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Carrie Germaine.
Yes.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Holly Jarvis.
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. All right. We have an agenda and approved our items. Moving on, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Heatherton to give us his superintendent report.
Thank you. Well, we had a extra-long President's Day weekend because of another snow day. So I thought I'd just check in. We constantly are getting questions about snow days and how that works. We do have six snow days built into the calendar through the state of Michigan. And then there is a waiver in the state for three more snow days after the original six. And that's a process that's handled through pupil accounting. We are currently at seven, so we are still under the nine by the state, although the last one to three will have to be done through waiver process. So hopefully, the weather cooperates and spring comes early, and we don't have to worry about that anymore. We recently got some feedback on our culture and climate survey, sent communication out to parents. It was our third annual culture and climate survey from Hanover Research. There were a total of four main constructs, 17 sub-constructs, that were spread across four respondent groups, and we were very, very excited. Over the course of the three years, 70% of all constructs and sub-constructs had their highest scores, or the parents, students, staff, and community rated us on different sections of culture and climate the highest this year as compared to previous years. So the growth was good. I do credit that to our team's hard work, especially our new principals. We had our MTSS meeting today, and I had them stand up because every building has someone in a new position. And for the culture and climate to come back so high with such a fresh, new team means that they are doing some amazing things in the buildings that they're having running. And what was the other one? Oh, an average of 1,300 people each year respond. We're up to just over 3,800 people who have partaken in that important survey. Last Thursday, we had a very successful bond sale. We sold all of our bonds in the first series at 100%. That doesn't always happen, so that is outstanding. The teams that work with us, our PFM, and that's our financial team, they take care of setting everything up and calculating. Stiefel is the marketing team and the sellers of the bonds, and Truun, as you know, is our lawyer team. So between PFM, Stiefel, and Truun, we entered that day ready to sell the bonds, sold 100% of it. We do have a great credit score, and because of that, we attracted some great companies. And I sent this out to the board, but some of the companies that did partake in buying our bond was State Farm, Boston Trust, Goldman Sachs, Franklin Funds, KeyBank, Nuvien, and Baird. So that was great news. Spring M A S B fires around the corner. There it is. It is the 2025 Spring Institute. Looks like Friday, April 19th through April 20th. And please see, Sue, if you are interested. Although I see it says 2024, Sue, so we'll have to double-check the registration date on All right. We'll grab the one for this spring.
That's my fault. My fault.
As I mentioned, we did have our big district meeting today. If you haven't been around in a while, we run three meetings, a fall data meeting, a winter data meeting, and a spring data meeting. We've been doing that for almost 20 years. That benchmark data now is kind of state law as far as reporting that out to you and taking a look at it, as well as bringing those teams together. So the buildings do this, and then we repeat the process as a district. Most schools are bringing a couple of general ed classroom teachers, a principal, a counselor, a social worker, a teacher consultant, a special education teacher, and possibly others. They look at our behavior data, our attendance data, our wellness data, and of course, our academic data. And then we did some celebrations, and they got about an hour and a half to look at their plans and adjust for the second semester to finish strong. First grade was the shining star this year. 80% of the entire grade level hit benchmark, which is a first indicator of 80%, and I think 10 years since we've been doing this. We've been doing it 20 years. We did hit a few of those about 10 years ago, and so we have started to hit those again, which is good news. And just a reminder to those out there who are interested in the O'Brien Trust Scholarship that is due to Mr. Kitchen at the end of March. There are $4,000 or $5,000 scholarships available. Thankful to the O'Brien Trust for that generous, generous opportunity to lay out such large offerings for us to be able to give to kids for many, many years. And that is it.
Thank you, Rod. Any questions, Rod?
I have a question, and it's about that O'Brien Trust. I came across this paper at home, I think at one time we all got one, and it says, "O'Brien Trust Scholarship Criteria." Now, I know we had discussed... Now, is this what they gave us, the guidelines that we were supposed to follow per them, or did we make this up?
That was...
By us?
Yes.
Jim and team. Okay. Because I just... The thing that I was concerned about, it didn't mention that we were, you know, because it said 3.5 or higher. And I know that we said that we might not always give it to a student who, you know, who was 3.5 or higher.
I think that was one of the original workings.
Okay.
We ended up putting that in rubric form.
Okay.
And I don't think that is the exact final copy. But Jim, can you send those back out? Absolutely.
Thanks, Kim. Anyone else have questions, comments?
I got a few. I have a few, Carrie.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just simple ones, no trick questions. Head count. What's our head count?
In the fall, we were 30... What were we, 3490? We have about another three or four weeks to count up all our virtual students. Sounds like we're going to be down about 20, but that'll depend on the final audit for this February count.
Right. I know we missed it. Whatever. So I was talking to Autumn earlier, and I asked her, because I guess she had inquired about how many out-district students we have around. It was around 890, is that correct?
Yeah.
Give or take, I mean, 20. I'm not going to hold you to a number.
It was just above 800.
Okay. And how many of our students have transferred out? Because that's what I was concerned about. She said it was like 90. Is that a correct number?
No, we are...
It's like 4, 500, I thought, last week.
We're just around plus 250 or plus 275. So I've given this out numerous times. I can have Nikki rerun it when it refreshes. It hasn't changed in the last two times I've given it out. You can only run the data once a year from my school data. They don't... They only refresh it once. So it's the 800 number minus about 275.
Okay. No problem. And the proficiency rate that they have posted on some of their websites, not at my school, but at like Newsweek does a study and a couple of the other district or other large news organizations. Is it... Do you think those are accurate where it says 24% for math and 41% for reading for our district when they list it? Of course, that was for 23, 24, I believe. Or would you say that's... How are they pulling those numbers from the same things we do?
Yeah, I don't know. I think that it depends on what data you're looking at, where they pulled it from, what kind of assessment it was, if it was a benchmark assessment or a final end-of-the-year assessment or a state assessment or an achievement assessment. I know that Harvard just recently studied Michigan. I don't know if that's the one you're referring to, but they found that Michigan has lost data compared to other states. Michelle talked about that in Academic Achievement this week. I do know that if you take a look at longitudinally over like a 30-year span, reading data actually hasn't changed all that much all the way across America. So I doubt that it's at 24%. Our benchmark came in...
No, it was math was 24%, they said, and reading was like 41 or 42%.
Right. Our benchmarking has us in the 60s to high mid 70s, so I can't imagine that's quite accurate. So I'd have to know what the source is.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right. Moving on, I don't see our student board representative. If she comes later, we can let her give her report. Just a reminder, you do have employment of non-certified staff and a resignation in your packet. And then moving on to the board subcommittee reports. I'll start with academic achievement. We'll go to policy, Andrea, finance operations, and then Kim. I'll come back to you for the county association update, if you have anything to change or a reminder for tomorrow night if people are going. So beginning with academic achievement, we had a pretty long meeting yesterday. Great information was shared. And as a follow-up to Rod's information, Jim and Rod and Michelle Hall provided an overview of the winter STAR testing data, assessment data. And they highlighted the STAR early literacy performance for the district, which was at 80% in general and 85% for Moorish. And as Rod mentioned, it's been about 10 years since we've seen that level. And the Data Walk, as they call it, also included the STAR reading and math results. Michelle gave a great presentation. Hopefully, we can share it with everyone because it was really good. Based on the Education Recovery Scorecard from Harvard and Stanford, and it looks at the Michigan academic recovery post-pandemic. So this is data I think we've all been waiting for, maybe a little nervously. But the data looks at grades three through eight across the country, pre-pandemic through the years following the pandemic. Chuck has a kind of a somewhat of an answer. Michigan overall ranked 17th in the nation in math recovery. And it's... It looks like when we look at Swartz Creek in particular, we lost about a year in math instruction versus the overall for Michigan. Michelle also shared subgroups by socioeconomic status and gender and how that influences some of the performance that we see and the data that's collected. For reading recovery, Michigan ranked 44th in the nation. Again, that's through 2019 through 2024. And 98% of the students in districts where achievement is below 2019 levels. So there's some work to do there. Michelle shared math recovery trends, again, that were those subgroups that I mentioned. And so I'm hoping everybody, if we can share it with everyone, Michelle sent it out to those that were in attendance at the meeting, if she can share it with everyone or we can share it, kind of take some time looking at it. Again, the chronic absenteeism that Rod mentioned, that's where students miss 10% or more of the total days of school, increased from pre-pandemic rates, and they're still seeing impact on chronic absenteeism on the scores, the academic scores across the state of Michigan. Michelle did a great job with the district call to action for addressing our declining math and reading performance and the chronic absenteeism, and some strategic interventions to improve the outcomes. Very important is a dyslexia law that was passed last year that now must be implemented by the schools. There are requirements for the teachers to be trained in the science of reading. Literacy coaching has to be provided. Students have to be screened for dyslexia. The district has to adopt approved reading assessments, and Swartz Creek has a pilot underway, although it depends on what the state chooses, what we will be able to select from. It may be what we're piloting, it may not. MTSS practices have to be implemented. And as you've heard from Rod repeatedly, there's a robust MTSS program in Swartz Creek, very well organized. With regard to the training for teachers, there's a letters training. It stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. I've referred to it before based on Michelle's presentations. It's free for our teachers to take the program, to be involved in it. It's eight units and 200 hours of training. And there is a stipend that they can receive for completing these units. This will continue in K3, and it's going to be recommended for K12 special education. So the recommendations from the team were to revisit our district's strategic plans to make sure it's consistent with what we're required to do related to the law and implementing all of these requirements. Look at the grants and budgets that we have to prioritize the needs and the areas that we are focusing on, looking at the MTSS teams to help communicate and build the urgency that's required to get this in place and implement the action plans. And then look at our data, look at our data, look at our data, and see where we have gaps and continue to focus on those areas to close those gaps. Michelle also briefly shared the proposed English language arts text materials for the Honors English 8 and 9 program. And that was it. It was, believe it or not, there's a lot more that she shared that I didn't, but great overview, great presentation, really thoughtful work. And so we'll send that out to everybody, and you can take a look at it. Any questions?
Just a couple of follow-ups. The data that Harvard and Stanford pulled had to have come from a statewide system, so it's state data. It's at least a year old at this point because we're just getting ready to take the new state round for '24, '25. So it's about a year behind our benchmarking data. We were, just so you're aware, we were... Had a better gap for attendance than the average, and we were almost a year ahead in reading before the pandemic compared to the state. Math is our largest gap compared to the state, and that's why you'll probably see math curriculum coming later this year. They've been working on that for a couple of years. Most of the districts, I think 75% have already gone to benchmarks around the county, and that's the same programming that we're looking at, as well as the suggestion to take one of our instructional coaches and make it a math coach so that the programming is implemented with fidelity.
Thanks, Rod. Any other questions?
You know, that brings me up, Carrie, if I can have the floor for a second. We changed the elementary schools, our grade schools, I believe during the pandemic at Ben's urging, and I don't know who the curriculum director was then at the time. And they said that it would improve the grades substantially. Do we have data to support that? And that we would save approximately $300,000 to $500,000 annually? And I don't think I've ever seen anything back to that. And I think just myself and you were the only ones on the board at the time.
So yes, we've said in our benchmarking, they have increased over the last three years. So three years ago was the first non-COVID year, and we've seen increases in our...
Well, what would have been before COVID? Because we really didn't have anything to judge it by before that. We did it during COVID.
Right. But we had... We lost two years of data during COVID, so there's not a comparable right there.
We couldn't do like 2019 and then compare it to 2023?
Oh, yeah. We could find longitudinal data.
Yeah, I'd like to see that if we could, just to see, because that was the big concern, is that we're going to switch our K5 to K3 and then 4, 5.
Well, as Carrie said, with the national data, the state and the nation have both lost about a grade level across the entire country since COVID, so it does have a big impact. That's why we started measuring in 2022 as the new set points. It's kind of the common theme we've talked about in every academic achievement.
I don't remember what it was, why we did it. There's something to do with some money, too. He said he could save us a half million dollars a year, so I don't know.
If you consolidated classrooms and you had... Were able to shore up class size and get more teachers, because, you know, we were having 19 in one class and then 28 in another and then 25, and it's not efficient. One of the issues is we're still not efficient because there's multiple grade levels, you know, at a school that doesn't...
Our class sizes end up being smaller, though. That was one of the positives.
Yeah.
That's good.
And they are at K2. I think they're a little larger at 3, 5.
Chuck, it was also intended to allow the teachers at those grade levels to work more closely together?
Well, that was the idea, yeah, that four or five teachers could collaborate and come up with better lesson plans, maybe, or... Not, I shouldn't say better lesson plans. Implement the plans better to the children. So I remember there was some active discussion on that at a board meeting in '21. And I don't think a lot of the parents were for it, but I don't really recall. I think it was split down the middle with the parents and the teachers were... There was a lot of teachers that called and said that they would prefer it that way, but we heard from about 40 teachers, from what I recall. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Andrea?
Policy.
That's it.
So we met yesterday. We called the meeting to order at 9:29. It was myself, Carrie, Alyssa, Rod, Jim, Dave Simonson, and Michelle Hall. Dave first talked about the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act. So I know people have heard a lot about that, about the days they're going to get. Dave covered this and that it's replacing the Michigan Paid Medical Leave Act. There are still changes that are going to come, and the government has actually proposed the start date of this gets pushed to July 1st. I don't know if we had the handouts that we talked about yesterday. Well, there is the one. There's the Truun one. So not all of them. So my apologies. We did have some handouts yesterday. Basically, it just summarized... I don't know if you still have those. If anybody wants them, I can email them out as well, too. But there were some handouts yesterday. I just explained it a little bit more, but there are still changes coming. And Dave is also working on an updated employee handbook, so reflect more specifics on how this is to be handled. I know there's a chart about, you know, earning one hour every 30 hours worked and whatnot, but it's not finalized yet, so there is still more to come on that. Through an update is in your packet here, all the red language. So this is just for review now, and we will vote on it next month. So this is their changes there. Then there's a social media policy update. That should be at the bottom of your pile here. We handed this out last meeting, last board meeting, so we will vote on this tonight. There was no public comment. There was committee comment that Dave Simonson, this is kind of an off-the-cuff, but he is looking into a Roth 403B offering for employees. Next meeting, March 20th, and we adjourned at 10:07 a.m.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this off-the-cuff 403B offering, is that something new they're looking into or something to replace something? Like just an added...
Just like an extra.
Okay.
It's literally an extra.
I didn't know if it was swapping for something else. Okay. Thank you.
So the law changed, and if an educational employee wanted to put money away, their options were limited, and one of those options is a 403B. And so a company can come in and sit down and show them how to do that, and then our payroll process. The law changed now allows school employees to use Roth IRA as well. So it's just basically how they want to save their money, and they have a few more choices than they've had in the past.
Thank you very much. All right.
One more thing. Dave did say that there is one more update before we get to the end-of-the-year update, and he will bring that to the next one, but it looks like all of the Title IX updates are going to be at the next meeting to look at. So if you're interested in anything else about ESTA, which is in your packet today or Title IX, that'll be at the next meeting.
Thanks, Rod. All right. Moving on, we have...
I have one question.
Oh, sure.
President. Yeah. This one here, I didn't really read last month, and it's my fault. How did this come about, this social media for board members? Who drafted this or who thought of this? If anybody knows.
We had the conversation at some meetings. There was not a social media policy for the board. There used to be when we had Neola. In our newer provider, there was not a social media policy. Alyssa was kind enough to do some research. So go ahead, Alyssa.
Yeah, I went ahead, and in those meetings, and one of our meetings that we had, I had drafted on the social media policy, the first draft. I do that in my day-to-day job, so I had put that together, did some research, did some phone calls with the M A S B, and then we had sent it all out to the attorneys.
This was at last month's meeting?
A copy list was distributed with my meeting notes from last...
Well, that's why I was confused.
Yes.
Because she just started last month, so I don't know how everybody got it and then it got done so quickly.
This came to the last board meeting.
Right.
But it did.
Right. But she drafted it last month, right? That was January.
I'm not sure what you're shaking your head for, Autumn. It was... This was actually given out at the last board meeting? We talked about it.
Well, I was just wondering how I was accused of breaking the social media policy if we didn't have one.
Board policy in general.
Oh, yeah.
Not a social media policy, just board policy.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Yeah.
I just... I'm just being careful not tramping on anybody's rights to say what they refer to, especially as elected officials. I know this is a guideline. It's a guideline. I'm not even on social media, so I don't have a horse in the race. I'm just... You guys want to make a guideline for an elected official, and if somebody's defamatory or, you know, liable or slander, or somebody slandered, somebody liable, it's not true, they could be taken to court, I'm sure, be sued unless it was underneath board auspices, which they would probably defend us then with governmental immunity. But I don't know why, how this came up, and I never... I was just surprised. And last month, and maybe I should have questioned it more. I don't know. I just...
We talked about it last month at the policy meeting. That was just before the board meeting. So then this was brought to the board meeting. But there are board policies in place of not being able to, one, share private emails. I mean, we're doing FOIA for an email.
Private, yeah.
Yeah, if they're FOIA, then they are FOIAed. But when they're not FOIAed, they can't be publicly shared, so...
What do you mean, our SwartzCreek.org emails?
Yes. If I emailed you, and you then turned around and posted my email to you on a public forum, would that be appropriate?
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I don't know if it's against the law because anything that's done... because anything that's done on a public email is subject, one, to FOIA, if they want to FOIA it. So it's really already public information.
But if you didn't FOIA it, if you, you did not FOIA.
If I send Chuck Melkey to Andrea Fick is one thing.
Right.
If I send ChuckMelkey.org to Andrea Fick and CC Holly Jarvis, that's easily obtainable.
Not a CC and not obtained.
Okay, not CC, okay, don't CC, just to you.
No, I'm just saying, not, not obtained through a FOIA. Would you take my email from me to you and put it on social media?
Oh, I don't know if I would do that or not. No, me, I don't know if I would do that, right? I didn't know, I didn't know, is that what's happening?
That's what happened.
Oh, okay.
And it was cleared with a lawyer. Yeah, yeah. So Chuck, a conversation.
Well, I, I want to get into very personal, but I was just on the policy then. And I've got the old policy, so I don't remember seeing it in the old policy. You saying it was there, Rod?
There was not.
Was it in the old, because I've got the old, the book that they gave me when I originally came in. I guess that was from the old, right?
Neola had a social media policy.
Yes.
For sure. I know that multiple principals used it in write-ups with staff when they violated it.
And there's social media policy for the district staff as well, but that's what we're missing.
I know for staff, they're employees.
Right, right. But this one was missing from, from our board li, or board policy list.
Okay, I just.
And it's been reviewed by our attorneys, so that's why it came back from the last month's version, all redlined and cleaned up for tonight.
Okay.
So that we could look at it and approve it.
I dropped the football, I didn't pay attention to it enough then, last month.
And if I can just quickly interject real quick, when I had reached out to the Michigan Association of School Boards, most school boards do have a social media policy.
I know it's a separate context, but.
We're elected officials.
Correct. Back when we made ourselves a 401(c)(3) for Schwartz Creek Youth Football Board, the attorney at that time told us even to make a social media policy for a volunteer group. So like, we've had ours in place, I know that's completely separate, but those are all even volunteer, which I know is different, but like, I was surprised that I had, that I hadn't seen, even though it did exist, that I hadn't seen ours before. It just came to a shock to me, because I just assumed it was already there, just because that's what we were told, and that was, you know, fourteen years ago. So, and so it wasn't even, social media wasn't even as prevalent as it is now. But just on a side note, I mean, we as just a volunteer organization have one, too.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All of them, thank you.
I think we'll find that this protects the individuals, it also protects the district. So, for what that's worth. Okay, Andrea? You're good? Okay. Any other questions for Andrea? If not, we'll move on to Alyssa for finance.
Thanks, Carrie. So yesterday, we had a great finance committee meeting. We had eight people in attendance. We had myself, Chuck Melkey, Carrie Germain, Rod Heatherton, Jim Kitchen, Jamie Cohen, Bill Loader, and from the public, we had John Poposik. First on the agenda, called the meeting to order at two oh eight PM, followed by going straight into the financials. So for our general fund, we have nine million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. On food service, we have five hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and forty-two cents. I did have an error on this guy, so you'll see on the student activity funds, we actually have eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-one cents. Debt service fund, three million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And capital project funds, four million, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, or four million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Following the financials, Mrs. Cohen had reported that the district had received an unexpected refund of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars from SATSEC regarding vision and dental. The amount was, was from twenty-seventeen in the reserve funds, and it's now returned because we are with Mesa, not SATSEC now. Next, we moved on to grants. Mrs. Cohen had reported on the Safe Routes to Schools, which is a program in the city that encourages students to walk or bike to school. Now that the twenty-nineteen project is completed, the district will spend twenty-four thousand dollars on personnel and material to encourage and educate health and fitness to the community. This will defer to the fiscal year of twenty-five and twenty-six, so the district has a full breadth of time to implement. Next, we had a bond update. Mrs. Cohen stated that she had created the twenty-twenty-five bond as a new fund, New Fund Forty-Four in the financials. We completed the bond sales, as Mr. Heatherton had stated, and we received a double-A rating from S and P, so that's fantastic news. Tonight, we'll have some board action items. We have approval of ratifying resolution of the bond sale and also the Princeton Staffing Service contract. We will have future board action items in March. We will receive the E-rate bid recommendations and also the general fund budget amendment. We didn't have any public comments or committee comments, and we adjourned at two fifty-three PM, and our next meeting is March twenty-fifth at two PM. Any questions?
We have a motion to approve the finance.
I'll make a motion to approve Alyssa's report as stated.
Any support? Andrea, comments or questions? Hearing none, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germain?
Yes.
Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Tim Winter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We passed that. Any other questions for Alyssa? Thank you very much, Alyssa. Now, moving on to building inside operations, Chuck?
Very boring meeting. We started at three twenty-nine PM directly after the finance meeting. Attended was, as Alyssa said, Bill Loader, Madam President, Jamie Cohen, Superintendent Rod, Deputy Superintendent Jim, Trustee Alyssa, myself, and John Poposik from the public. Mary Crepo update, Jim Kitchen presented a budget for the second phase of Mary Crepo with ranges of two point two million to two point nine seven million. Jim and Rod both suggested that we go with the middle plan for two point seven five million. There's a spreadsheet that should be included with this packet here that shows the different options. They will talk to individuals, and the bids are getting, I just, I think they're all done. If I'm not mistaken, they are done. And then Jim and Rod will bring that back for formal adoption and, you know, discussion and voting on next month. AEDs, same thing as the month before, Bill has already purchased or is going to purchase eleven AEDs, make a total for a cost of eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, and he's going to replace fourteen to sixteen more in the next two years, obviously taking the older ones out and replacing with the new ones. And he's using thirty-one double-A monies. At the bus garage, Brad Wheeler, I don't know if it's a promotion, I guess it's a promotion, he's been moved from bus driver to garage, to the bus garage as a maintenance tech. Bill will hire a bus driver in the summer to fill his spot, and Brad will be able to continue driving while being a maintenance tech, and he's going to add one or two more bus drivers in the summer as needed for alternates. There was discussion about the PAC, VLC addressing and renaming some of the building or the streets that lead to them. So for emergency purposes, we have to put a street sign on the driveway south of Miller Road, they're coming into the PAC Center, just west of the PAC Center. Some names were gone over by committee members, and suggestions were made. I suggested we let the staff come up with a name, and if the board could vote on it maybe next month, and, you know, give them whatever, gift card or something, I don't know, whoever wins. So I don't know what names they want to use, and I don't know if Rod and Jim want it passed on to the staff for them to have like a, a tryout, what's a good name for it. And then the city will put up the appropriate markers at a cost of about fifteen hundred dollars. And we need a formal marker at the entrance of the middle school, so it can indicate where the VLC entrance is at clearly, also for emergency purposes and the flow of traffic. There was no public comment, no committee comment. Next meeting dates March twenty-fifth at two PM or directly after finance.
Thanks, Chuck. Any questions for Chuck?
I just have a random question. I'm excited that it's getting a name, I think that's cool, but like, when you go to name something, do you have to like, clear it through like a database of names, like, that you could or couldn't use? I'm just wondering, do you get to just pick something, or you have to make sure it's a usable name? I'm just meaning if anybody knows, like.
That's a great question.
There's a lot of streets that are the same, if you notice.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a Mark Drive in Schwartz Creek and then Davison and then.
I just, if you had to like, put it through something, but.
No, they're, they're going to let us do whatever we want, but I don't, nobody could really come up with a name. I mean, Rod and Jim and Bill had some excellent ideas, but, you know, maybe give it to the staff and let them do a potluck and give a twenty-dollar gift card, and then let us vote on it, so it sounds, you know. Yeah, I mean, just get input from everybody, you know, I don't.
Are you cooking, Chuck?
No.
Oh, okay.
But I'll contribute twenty dollars to somebody's lunch at Taco Bell or some, Burger King, or no, I'm a horrible cook, I can barely make a peanut butter sandwich.
Yeah, the, the initial, the initial presentation was, you know, something like PAC Drive or that would designate it. So, so just to, I don't know the answer, though.
Do you have any suggestions off the top of your? What's that?
Fireball Drive.
There you go, put it in.
I mean, it could go both ways.
It could.
That's a good name.
Fireball the Dragon, Fireball the Dragon.
Blue Performance Avenue.
That could also go both ways.
Well, you know what, maybe, maybe the board should put in the names along with the staff, and we can all vote on it, you know.
But we can't win the gift card, though.
No, that's okay.
All right.
Whatever, our staff.
So if you do have ideas, I suppose you could send them to.
Send it for him to do it.
Who should they send them to? Bill or to you?
Send them to Jim.
Oh, Jim. So Jim gets, if you have ideas or suggestions for a name, I would like to call it Ten Mile an Hour Drive, but it's, it's a great idea. It's a great idea, and so, yeah, put your thinking caps on.
I like Creek Country Lane. How about we use that? I just think, I just think of that, we'll get to Dragon, call it Creek, Creek Country, Creek, 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 Creek Domain, something, you know, come on, that's why I said, let everybody think about it, and they can always go on AI, they'll pick it for them, and it'll probably be much better than what we could come up with with their brains.
All right, well, we'll start thinking about that. Okay, if there's no other, I am going to ask Kim if she would give us any update that she has on Genesee County and/or the details for tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah, I haven't, our next meeting would actually be tomorrow, but it's going to be the, I just wanted to remind everybody that there's going to be dinner at five thirty, and there will be a detective speaking there on community, community and community safety. So I think it's going to be interesting, so just encouraging everybody to come.
Thank you, Kim, and thanks again for attending. And if I forget any time to add you to the end of the reports, please nudge me. Thank you. All right, moving on to board discussion items, speaking of safety.
Yes, excited to have Mr. Claren with us tonight to talk a little bit about what's going on with safety. You may have heard that a local school district today did have to go into lockdown because of a perceived threat, and Mr. Kevin is just going to kind of do a high-level overview. Obviously, as you know, with SEC and the audit that they did a couple of years ago, we don't go into deep detail, because you're not going to want to have your safety plan book aired out in public, but he will again go through the process and procedures and some of the high-level details.
Thank you, Mr. Heatherton. Tonight's presentation, I want to focus on three items. The first, best practice in school safety. Secondly, how our district matches up with the best practices. And lastly, finish up with a few future improvements or recommendations for future improvements that I've shared with Mr. Kitchen and Mr. Heatherton. This is going to be the hard part, I'm also the clicker, too. We know from basic psychology that the need for safety is fundamental for our well-being. It must be attended to before students and staff can truly engage in learning. School safety over recent decades has, has always been the top priority of our parents, wondering if their child will be safe when they go to school. Recognizing these conditions, our district leadership continues to place a premium on pursuing safety for the ultimate success of the district. Let us now review four best practices or findings that our current district research partner Hanover Research has provided for us in a recent brief that we'd received on physical security. Balancing security measures against a welcoming environment of climate is essential. When considering the Goldilocks effect, we need to provide just the right amount of safety measures to make staff and students and parents feel secure without creating undue anxiety. Schools still need to be open systems for the school community. Our secure entrances at our various school buildings around the district are a great example of this balance, where the free or unfettered access to the building hallways has been taken away, yet parents, students, and contractors can still come into the buildings after going through the office requesting process at the main doors. Decisions to place metal detectors and armed security at entrances may add to security, but will it create too much anxiety? Perhaps cameras coupled with artificial technology may be the route in the future as this approach is far less intrusive or impactful on the school environment. So these are all questions regarding next steps as we try to secure that balance and also use our allocated security funds. Finding two. The next finding blends right into the first, as this best practice reminds our district to have a strategy for matching the safety-based resources to current policies and procedures. Basically put, are we using the tools given to us to be safe? Getting people to change habits is one of our greatest challenges, as implementing security measures may not immediately be accepted as essential by our staff, students, and parents. To help our district with this process of strategizing and prioritizing this alignment of our resources to practice, practices, Secure Education Consultants was secured through a state grant to conduct a comprehensive review of our district in spring of twenty-twenty-three. Through this process, Secure Education Consultants reviewed our written policies and procedures and matched them with our practices as they visited each building. This walkthrough process led to a variety of recommendations that have since been assigned for implementation. Our relationship with Secure Education Consultants will continue, as they shall return to assess other features in our district, such as our outdoor events, where a school community is meeting beyond the school day and the standard brick-and-mortar scenarios. Our athletic director, operations director, coaches, athletes, parents, and local public safety units will all be key in considering the best approach for responding to a wide variety of safety considerations. Finding three. Emergencies of all kinds, weather, industrial accidents, armed intruders, are all scenarios that our district's school buildings need to be prepared to handle. In high-stress situations, we never know how people may react, so our annual drill program mandated by state school code is a critical safety feature. To the greatest extent possible, our school resource offices are directly involved in our drills to observe and provide invaluable feedback to building leaders and staff during debrief sessions. This is where the real learning takes place. This is, this is where students and staff can clear up confusion regarding action, actions they're expected to take, where barriers to following those procedures can be pried and solved. During the first semester of the school year, all of the district procedures were revised, were needed, and rolled out to staff in weekly installments. Through that process, questions and conversations were generated, and explanations provided to eliminate confusion regarding our primary emergency procedures. This final finding, or best practice, underscores the critical nature of teams. Building safety requirements has ramped up significantly over the last twenty-five years, and the district model of a designated person or a few people being tasked with considering all of the safety implications is impractical and outmoded. Our district currently relies upon a variety of personnel to address various concerns in their respective departments. of personnel to address various concerns in their respective departments. To ensure that we've considered the various needs of our students, staff, and community, unfortunately, they're not always collaborative. Which leads me into our needed improvements for the future. So number one, the routine assembly of a multifaceted planning team that brings support departments together to set priorities for improving district readiness and collaborate across department and school buildings must happen. Number two, through this diverse planning team, safety procedures can be reviewed along a regular calendar each month as opposed to the annual review currently used in our district or the biennial review required by the state. And number three, this planning team can coordinate tabletop simulations hosted at the building level, so principals and staff have full clarity as to what their role will be and how other district departments and local public safety units can coordinate support for them. We've done some tabletop simulations with our county safety team, but need to increase the regularity of this practice to broaden the range of scenarios and increase the number of participating departments. Through these recommendations and our current efforts, I believe that we can continue to shift from the mindset that safety or security is provided for us to how can I make, help make everyone safe through my own actions. Mr. Hetherton, do we have time for questions?
We have a current district safety team right now?
Right now, we, when we gather together, safety can be, can be discussed as a, at the cabinet level. When we bring our principals together, if we wish to discuss safety issues, then that becomes that ad hoc team. But what I'm recommending is that we get a multi-department team together because, for example, Travis Smith back here, technology, he handles the security cameras. He'll work directly with principals, may not necessarily be involved in direct communications with other departments, but maybe operations, maybe myself. So we're updating various procedures or policies regarding those cameras. Sean Kovach, Student Services, she handles crisis counseling. She puts her team together. She shares those documents with her, but in a crisis situation, we may not all have that information, what action she's taking. And that's what we're saying, if we bring those different departments together that all contribute to our, our safety operations, that it can improve our communication and collaboration and strengthen that team.
So do you think that there would have to be almost like even subcommittees underneath that because of the different, almost like each individual elementary as well as the middle school, as well as the high school, as well as the VLC, like subcommittees with, under that umbrella as well?
We would want principal representation on that group at the different levels. And then we always then bring the departments. Mr. Kitchen sets the calendar, and so once a month, we bring those department leaders in with the principals, and that would be that opportunity to make sure that it was fully communicated there. We could certainly over-communicate and do additional, you know, through emails and through other memos and other direct conversations and walkthroughs to make sure that, that were checked.
Okay. I was just trying to understand because it was on the future, like goals, so I was just making sure I understood what we were trying to aim for, so.
I'm, I'm advocating that we get a multi-departmental team together, and so we're making sure that all those people that have a significant slice in there. When we, when you go to the FEMA training and they talk about incident command structure, it's multi-departments. We, we need to start bringing those departments together. And so Mr. Hetherton may want to join that, because if we get into a crisis situation, he's going to want to be able to talk to all those departments and know that we're all already communicating and coordinating before a crisis situation. And so when we speak to him, we already kind of can anticipate which each, each of the departments are going to do.
Okay, thank you.
So appreciate that. Thank you. Good question.
Yeah, just for clarification, we do have a team. Kevin, Jim, myself, and a couple of principals meet with the...
I didn't think we probably didn't have some.
Right.
I was trying to understand the difference for what, for future.
We have a quarterly team that meets with Mon, or Metro and Flint Township, and we do some of those scenarios. And then the buildings have like their emergency teams, their mer teams, and their crisis teams. What Kevin's talking about is a large district team that has its own monthly meetings. We have multiple building level teams, and we have a team that meets with the police, but we're talking about a district-wide department that meets monthly. That could, they communicate off to those different groups.
Are, are you going to stay, Kevin?
What's that?
Are you staying?
I certainly can.
I just thought if there were any questions on Raptor, that you might be one of the people.
Do I have any questions?
No, no, if we're going to talk about Raptor shortly.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll.
You'll be here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, we do have a Trune policy update, and I think we did talk about that briefly earlier.
Yes, so Mr. Simonson did bring the ESTA information to policy this week. Is that just yesterday?
Yes.
Yesterday. And so that is gonna be under Employee Rights and Responsibilities 4100. Specifically, it'll be 4113, the Michigan Earn Sick Time Act. And this is your red language coming in from Trune because this is, this is brand new. So there is some possible effect going in in February. There's also some possible delay of effect until July 1. But we're just waiting to see what happens at the state level, and we will bring this back for a vote in March.
Okay. Anything else on that? No. All right. Moving on to board action items, beginning with the Princeton Staffing Solutions.
So we have used staffing solutions for special education, specifically speech in the past. But as you know, I do now bring service agreements to you for approval. So the service agreement is to Princeton, and they are basically providing us a speech in language pathologist for $80 an hour, not to exceed 60. That doesn't mean we pay them 60, just means at the $80 an hour rate, we will not be allowed to go over that. Then Mr. Simonson reminded me this morning that we actually have two vacancies in elementary speech and a middle school speech. So we're shy to speech people. So we did change the wording to continue that to be a threshold of 60 per staff member because we are short two speech pathologists, not one. And this contract is for your consideration.
Rod, how long is this contract term?
This is for the remainder of the 24, 25 school year.
Okay.
Our goal would be through the spring and summer hiring process, as you know, it gets quite hectic, that we would shore up all positions and not need contracted services to start '25, '26.
And just as a reminder, we need SLPs in buildings because there are children that require them in an IEP or?
So, yeah, we have multiple children who have speech and language IEPs, which is a federal document mandating specific interventions in speech and language.
Okay. Any questions for Rod?
I do, Madam President.
Sure.
Just let me get this straight. The two positions, we have those filled a year ago? There are two teachers that we, that we've lost?
Yes, that went to...
Or are we adding teachers?
No, no, both are lost. One went, I can't remember, it was about a half hour away, and I think one went to the ISD.
Okay, so we've lost two teachers.
Correct.
We're not creating more spots?
These are not new spots.
Okay, and just being clear on it. And are we gonna have to add more? Because when Sean was here, she thought we might have to add some more, or is that gonna be worked out, or is these two gonna cover it? Without putting you, committing you.
This, this is only a cut, gap coverage for the end of the year. We will at some point have to hire those two positions. We're just hoping to do it next year.
All right, that's fine with me. I'm good with it. Thank you.
But this will cover us in the meantime, till the end of this school year. Okay.
Oh, you don't remember the names? Don't we get resignations that come here? I thought I, I don't remember.
Yeah, it was the middle school.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Rod?
I make a motion, Carrie, that we approve the contract.
Thank you. You were reading my mind, Chuck. All right. Support?
Yeah, support.
Thank you. Be it, Autumn, sorry. Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the contract services of Princeton Staffing Solutions for the remainder of the 24, 25 school year at the rate of $80 per hour, not to exceed $60,000, to be funded out of the general fund as presented. If there are no other comments or questions which I failed to ask for, then I'll ask Sue to do roll call, please.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on, the approval of ratification of our sold bonds.
So as, pardon. So as we've talked about, we went out to sale on the bond market last Thursday, and through that 100% sale, we were able to sell those bonds in that first series. So this is just the approval of the ratification of the sold bonds.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved. Andrea, support. Alyssa, any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the ratification of sold bonds as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard? Kim Winter?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the Raptor platform software.
So Raptor is a technology service provider that allows us to check in and know who is in the building. Travis and Kevin and many other people have looked at a lot of services over the last four or five months, and it's Kevin's recommendation that we move forward with Raptor, and this will eventually replace our current software, which is...
Navigate 360 Emergency Management System and Visitor Management System.
Navigate 360. Raptor has definitely advanced over the last year or so, and it is used in quite a lot of districts across the state. Kevin's team did an amazing job really digging in deep for how each technology could best suit us. So for your consideration, Raptor.
Thank you, Rod. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Yeah, we have, yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion, but I'd like discussion on it for a quick second.
I'll support. Chuck and Andrea, support. Chuck, you had comments or questions?
Yeah, what budget are we taking this out? Is this coming out of the security budget or is this coming out of technology or what? Maybe Travis, I don't know.
This is a replacement. Eventually, it, obviously, there's gonna be a three-month overlap here, but this will replace Navigate 360, so it's not an add. It is out of technology.
Thank you, Chuck. Thanks, Rod.
How much more was it, Kevin, when you were at the, at the subcommittee meeting? I know the price is here, but it wasn't much more than the other one, right?
Right. It's probably about another $6,500. It's, you have the startup costs, so we paid this year basically about 11 and 1/2 for Navigate and another $9,000 for the visitor management system.
So when we see this price, it's gonna be much less, though, as we keep going.
Start at about 34, and I think it drops back to 27 in year two.
And how much are we paying for the other two right now?
Right now, 19.
Okay, so really, it's only an $8,000 increase to the district to have a much better system in place.
In year two, yes.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to clear that up, that we're not wasting, yeah, we're not throwing, okay. Thank you.
And in your assessment, Kevin, as I recall, when you reported on it, it was a higher quality system.
They, they have years, and they're the leader in this, this particular software. The, the recommendations after our meeting, and it went around, got the, the recommendations. And Oxford School went right to that. They're, they're, they have a safety coordinator right from Texas. That's where they're headquartered. It's just that, like I said, they've got quite a bit of market share, about 25% across the country.
Okay. Well, thanks, Kevin. Glad you stayed so you could answer these questions.
That's all discussion I had on it, Carrie. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Chuck. All right. Where did I leave out here? Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the purchase and subscription services agreement from Raptor Technologies for the amount of $37,676.80 as presented. And Sue, could you please do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. And thank you, Kevin, very much. All right. The next we have is the approval to reduce bus sale threshold.
You can split now, Kevin, if you want.
So as Chuck mentioned, we did talk about the buses with Mr. Loader. I think we had to do this one other time that I recall. Right now, your set threshold was to sell buses, nothing below 5,500. They've taken two buses out to bid twice, and neither one of those buses came back above that number. So we do have one that we think we could sell now at 45, and then he wants to go back for a third bid on the second one. But in order to sell the one, we would need to reduce the threshold again for this sales period to 4,500.
Thanks, Rod. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion that we reduce the threshold as stated by Superintendent Hetherton.
Chuck, support. Alyssa, any other comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves lowering the threshold sale price of each bus from $5,500 to $4,500 for buses number 11, number 21, and number 28 as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. And last, we have the adoption of Policy 2302.01, the social media policy for board members.
So this is the social media policy that you guys discussed, brought to the policy committee and redrafted by Trune for your consideration.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Andrea, support. Alyssa, comments or questions?
I want to just quick, yeah, I, I'm okay with it except for, and it doesn't matter one, two, three, four paragraphs. Now, avoid posting content in case the board member has already formed an opinion on pending matters, and I believe that's some of the board's judicial duties or duties that they would do is have an opinion on certain things, and that the board remains neutral on social media posts. So I don't know if that's a consideration of being biased or prejudiced when they make an opinion, when they're sitting up here, and they make an educated decision on what they have, and if they do get on social media and state something, I don't think that should be held against them. It's almost, I don't know. That's the only part I have a problem with, but that's my only comment. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Any others?
I think you were saying their opinion, Chuck, right? So when you're on social media, you should just express that this is my opinion, not the opinion of the board. As we all sit up here, it's obviously our opinion.
Well, it's, I know that. It says avoid posting content in case that the board member, singular, has already formed an opinion on a pending matter. And if somebody wants to get on there and voice their opinion on a pending matter, the board is a neutral body, and social media posts by a board member expressing an opinion on a pending matter may be considered evidence of a bias or prejudgment. We all have biases and prejudgment on the way we see things. I mean, we can ask what color that wall is, and you may say it's gray, and I may say it's white, and that's my bias, my prejudgment. And whatever I post now, I don't even...
it's white, and that's my bias, my prejudgment, and whatever I post now, I don't even know if this has any teeth, but I'm just, I think that's, it's almost like you can't say nothing if you're just on that paragraph.
I think, and I could be wrong, I think Trune's interpretation of that is, under Open Meetings Act, you have to come to the table unbiased and not have made an opinion because all opinions and decisions have to be made in public. And so what they're trying to state there is that you can't have that opinion because you can't have that in any case in the Open Meetings Act. All judgment and decision-making has to happen during an open meeting.
I don't see that, Rod, there, but I don't know. I mean, if that's the case, if that's, if, I mean...
That's my interpretation.
Yeah, I got it. And that's a great way of putting it because, hmm, I don't want to really say this.
Chuck, I don't think you want to risk having a conversation on social media either as board members. We have to be very careful.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, yeah, between some of the other stuff. I'm just, I'm a big freedom of speech person, and I just, and he just said that you form an opinion. I remember several months ago, we were at a meeting here, and a vote did not pass, and then we made a phone call and brought in another board member, and then we had a revote on that same day, which is against Robert Drew's orders. And then...
Technically, a phone call was not made. I was on the live stream, so I was watching it happen. Nobody called me, and they just commented out loud that since I was on the live...
If Holly was coming. But that's like, that's like a notion that, is that a violation of Open Meetings Act? I didn't take offense to it.
We actually sent that clip to Trune, and they said there was no violation.
Okay. Well, it actually failed because when you have a tie vote, they fail by Robert Drew's order. I don't know what, I mean, I don't want to get into the weeds, but when you have a tie vote, all the years I've ran a board, that is a failure. And to bring up a vote on that same day, I know what Trune says, but technically, the only way you can bring a vote back up is if one of the descending votes brings it back up, not one of the yeses. And you can, you can research that all you want on law. That's...
Yeah, we asked that of Trune. They said it was legal.
So Chuck, going back to your concern on...
That's my only concern. I don't want to get into weeds on things.
Yeah, on the social media, do you have any other?
No. Thank you, Carrie, for your indulgence of letting me speak on this.
Sure. Anyone else? If not, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Hallie Jarvis? Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
No.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yeah.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And Alyssa, thank you for taking the time to research that and draft the original document. All right, with that, let's go to public comments. We have a few people sitting here in our audience. If they would like to approach the board for a comment, please come to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Okay. And there's no one coming forward, so we are going to move on to comments and questions from the board. And I will open up the floor for any comments or questions. Kevin, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it, all the work that you do behind the scenes and do so well. Travis, thank you so much for everything you do. For everybody who couldn't see, he just blew us all a kiss. That's very kind. And Sue, thank you. You do an enormous amount of work. I'd have Holly hold up her policy book and show everybody what Sue does. It's just enormous. This is just one policy book. Jim, thank you for all you do, Rod, for you and your team. MTSS teams, the building leaders that are sitting here, thank you so much. We appreciate you. I wish we had a building administrator appreciation month, but you'd have to sit up here, and we'll come and sit out there.
And not in the front room.
And not in the front room. All right. So if there are no other comments, questions, thank you, everyone, for being here. Thanks, everybody out in the audience. Mr. Pabosek, hello. We said we would say hello to you because you say you're always one of our streaming followers, and so I promised that we would say hello. And if there are no other comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support? Support? Those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.